Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We left off in the middle of Article 8, and we have a motion before us for indefinite postponement. Mr. Lashar? Hello, hello?
Want you to say it again.
Okay, just saying, we're in the middle of Article 8, and we have a motion before is for indefinite postponement, and I just called on Mr. Lashar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me? I wanted to bring to your attention some information that was distributed over the weekend, and first, if you didn't get it either in email or in person, raise your hand. Oh, okay, we need to talk. What we did was, we had, the town clerk has a pretty extensive email list of town meeting, not everyone. We emailed things. I didn't get any kicked back, which was great, but there's still a possibility, depending on what email you use, that it might have been too large to be delivered. I did get enough feedback from town meeting members that I know in many instances it did go through, but I can't always know if it got kicked back for that reason. For those that we did not have email addresses, we ran around town hither and yon and delivered it, and then, I didn't want to say this, but for those that asked for hard copies, we also delivered them. The reason I didn't want to say it is, there was no humanly possible way to produce 192 copies in one or two days by ourselves. It just wasn't possible, so I'll apologize that that wasn't possible. But just to go over briefly, I think the letter I attached pretty well explained it, but what was given to you rearranged the information you already had, and there's only two exceptions to that I'm aware of, and that's what I described as those clerical errors. So I apologize that the original format wasn't great, but hopefully, the new format is better. I do want to mention, I'm fully aware of the motion in front of the body, but I also want to bring to your attention some more information I've got over the weekend from many of you. The first thing is not from you. David Tuttle, at some point tonight, may want to do an additional motion, and that's become, because as you heard at the last meeting, there is a litigation matter, so if we are to proceed with indefinitely postponing, before we do that, we'd at least like the opportunity to explain to the body what the litigation is, and what the tiny, tiny, tiny portion of the proposed changes, we'd still like to be able to pass through this body in order to settle the litigation. Ultimately, it's up to town meeting whether to do that or not. So if necessary, David will make a motion. I'm aware of four amendments that are going to hit the floor, and a fifth one that may or may not hit the floor, just so you're aware, so if anyone else is thinking of it, now you'll know it's covered. John Sasso is going to amend definitions, Section 2, and specifically, he's proposing to add something that would define an accessory retail use. The reason he's doing that is because John Sasso is also going to suggest an amendment to Section 5.3, Business C Retail Use, and he can describe that. John O'Neill may offer an amendment to Section 2 definitions for senior independent living facilities. Nancy Toomey, as I understand it, has an amendment for Section 5.5 accessory structures to deal with sheds and others, and Tony Durezzo also has an amendment to Section 5.5 for accessory structures. So I just wanted to make sure you understood what information you did and didn't have, and what additional information came to my attention, at least through you, over the weekend, and I do appreciate some of the kind thoughts that you sent over the weekend.
Further discussion? Mr. Schubert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Rick Schubert, Precinct 7. Since I was the originator of the motion, I'd like to make a few comments in light of what we received over the weekend. First of all, I'd like to thank Bob and Jean for the effort they put in on Friday to get this material to us. I think we're in a better place now that we have what appears to be the correct version of the proposed changes to the zoning bylaw, but in the end, I still believe it's in the town's interest for us to postpone, and I will explain. The intention of my indefinitely postponed motion is not to kill this article, but rather to just allow the necessary public process to play out. Instead of prematurely jumping into the discussion now, there is absolutely no reason not to move forward, move the discussion to a date sometime in the very near future. Imagine receiving the annual budget on a Friday night and being asked to discuss it the following Monday before FinCom has had a chance to hold public hearings, review, and make recommendations to town meeting. That's essentially the situation we're faced with today. As we've clearly seen, CPDC did not have sufficient time to do its job completely in the manner in which town meeting expects. Again, it's important to recognize that there is absolutely no pressing reason to move forward at this time. We have a working zoning bylaw in place today, and in September, we addressed the marijuana dispensary zoning issue that was a major concern to us. If the motion to postpone tonight passes, I am prepared to make an instructional motion that says, next slide, please. And this is certainly subject to edit as we, if we get to that point. The idea being that I would like to move it to some point in the near future, so that it doesn't have the appearance that this zoning bylaw is killed, but that the proposed changes can go through a process so that CPDC has the chance to do its job, to review the documents, to make recommendations, to get the recommendations back to town meeting hands, and then have the discussion at town meeting. I think that is the process that would work most efficiently for all of us, and I think that's basically what we expect. So I just wanted to put that out there, so you know that if, in fact, it is postponed, that that is the intention, and I think many folks would agree that we're not interested in killing this proposed bylaw change, but really, we want the opportunity to have a chance to process the information, and then have a real debate about it. Just in case you didn't have a chance to review Friday's new version of the proposed zoning bylaw, I would like to highlight only a few items that might require further explanation and/or a lengthy discussion by town meeting. This list will be no means a complete list, but it just gives you an idea of what's ahead. My point here won't be to debate any of these items at this time, but only to provide examples of items in the bylaw that town meeting will want to discuss. Bob, next slide, please. So many of you folks may have actually seen some of these, but I think it's important for those who didn't have a chance, just to get a sense of what's in the proposed changes, to know the extent to which we, as a body, would want to deliberate, and to know that it's not something that we could quickly do in one night or even two nights, but I imagine it'd be a process that would take much longer. And if that's the body's wish, I think that's fine, but just to be aware for those, in case you didn't have a chance to see it over the weekend. So just a couple of highlights. In the Business C, Business District, there's a change, a proposed table of uses which would allow retail stores of various kinds in Business C and restaurants by special permit. Maybe that's some of the amendment that Mr. Sasso proposes. In a very public process, town meeting voted not to change the zoning to allow for restaurants and retail stores, but rather to establish a smart growth district for one part of the area, and to allow for senior living in the other part of Business C. We have been informed that the point of the zoning bylaw work was not significant changes, but rather to streamline and simplify. The changes to Business C, these changes to Business C do not meet that standard, and if we agree to them, that's fine, but again, the understand, the need is to really have the opportunity to discuss, rather than to move quickly as though they were just housekeeping articles or revisions. Next slide, Bob, please. Another area that might cause some questions and additional discussion would be definitions. You've seen, or maybe you haven't, but there are new terms, and there are some of which are described and defined, and some are not defined or described. So again, these little line items may be simple, but you know from previous past discussions at town meeting that we could spend an hour on any one of these. So as you know, debating the merits of any one of these items could take a significant amount of time, so I'd like to mention one other relevant issue. The longer town meeting is in session, the less time there is available for the Attorney General to act on our action to create the Summer Avenue Historic District. This item is faced with an actual timeline, and our discussions here could go on for nights, which actually would impact that. Bob, next slide, please. So that's another thing that I think it's important for us to discuss or think about as we make the decision on whether or not we postpone this article or jump right into the discussion. Over the weekend, I had time to reflect on why I feel so strongly about getting this right. Much of it is from the years that I spent on CPDC, but more significantly, it's due to a specific case from Reading's recent history, a situation where I, and literally more than 1,000 others, worked many years to resolve a public process that had gone wrong. Some of you, in fact, many of you, remember the summer of 2002, when Mass Highway unveiled its plans to expand the I-93, 95 interchange. In a manner that would kindly be described as lacking sufficient public process, Mass Highway presented a plan that would have demolished about 80 homes in Reading. Once the plan was made public, it immediately placed those 80 homes, plus hundreds more in surrounding neighborhoods, into limbo. Property owners saw their home values drop sharply with no hope of selling if they wanted. As a selectman, I, along with others, then served on the interchange task force, a new committee that was charged to fix Mass Highway's original plan and process. We did this by starting the whole process over from the beginning. Five years later, the task force finally issued its final report. So yes, it was possible to fix the problems created by a premature plan, but it took five years, and probably close to 1 million hours, all the while keeping hundreds of property owners in a state of high anxiety. I have no interest in creating a scenario where Reading property owners are potentially placed at risk, just as they were in 2002. Considering the impact of zoning, there's a chance that we could do just that if we prematurely move ahead with a zoning bylaw rewrite that hasn't had sufficient time for the proper public process. Again, I ask that you support this motion to indefinitely postpone Article 8. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Arena?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Arena, Precinct 1. There are other people in this room I'd like to hear from. They're standing in front of me. Like me, you've sat in this room for three nights now, or should say, two nights, and about to start the third. We agreed Thursday to reissue, for the town to reissue, the current document with all known updates present, and that's been done, and since that send, a number of what I view as very constructive changes and proposals for changes have been proposed. You'll get a chance to see exactly none of them tonight if this motion to postpone continues. At the end of the day, this is the public forum for this to happen, and you are the representatives of Reading's 10,000-plus households. That's our job. That's what we signed up to do. I desperately would like my two hours back from Thursday night, but that won't happen. I very much would like tonight to be productive. Like our budget, each section tonight will be taken piece by piece for review. We can take section questions and objections easily, as we do in the budget. I believe all of you are patient enough to understand that the document may have comments from the audience that need to be addressed. I believe you are wise enough, having seen Reading in its best and worst times. I believe this audience is collaborative. I've seen this audience work in contentious settings, and yet get to a satisfactory place. Perfection is not a reasonable standard, and bylaws are never completely done and cast in stone. We can and will continue to make changes, likely many tonight, and the benefit of this document in front of you is that it's been rewritten in a single voice, in a manner that is largely consistent, section to section, and it's a substantial improvement over today. I'd like to spend the next two hours allowing you to comment. I'm interested in hearing what you have to say, and hearing the ideas that you bring to the floor, and hearing what your ideas bring from your colleagues in terms of commentary, but none of that can happen unless we continue. I'd ask you to vote this motion to postpone down, and I'd also ask a person in reach of the microphones to call the question, so we can get on and not waste another two hours debating whether we should talk.
Further discussion? Mr. Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Barry Berman, Precinct 4. I was, I'm another one of those people that feels completely out of my depth when it comes to talking about zoning. I was probably one of the few people, when we got the clickies last time, and Marcy was going through about whether we would attend the meeting, I actually wrote no, because I knew I wouldn't. I don't have anything really, it's not something that I'm really good at and feel like I could add to. I feel like discussing zoning is like root canal. It's something that you just don't want to do, but we have to do. Our current zoning bylaw right now is like a festering tooth. Everybody says it doesn't work. There's too many contradictions. When someone like Nancy Toomey gets up and says that, you know, who works with this document every day and says it's unworkable, I think it gives a clear sign that we have to act. I'm, I want to encourage everybody to turn down this amendment and to work on this, and let's get this done tonight. Our zoning bylaw, it's probably one of the most important economic development documents that we have in town. From my role on the Finance Committee, as we set and do the budget every time, every year, we find out that our state aid is dwindling and dwindling. We have to fight for more of those resources. Basically, the way that Reading is going to survive economically is with organic growth, and part of what we do to create that organic growth is to basically have a clear and concise way of doing business in town, not only for our current customers, and by us, we are all customers, as are the business in town, but also our prospective customers, the people who are going to come into town to invest in homes and invest in businesses. They need to have a clear document and a clear path on how are we going to do business in the town of Reading. There are so many different other kinds of things that are going to take up our time in the next coming months. We're going to be discussing the charter, still another important document in terms of how we govern ourselves in the town of Reading. There's just not enough time to kind of, to postpone this, and to send a message to everybody that we are, that we're going to do business in Reading. I think as we discuss this, there are kind of three things that I think that we want to look at in terms of the document. I myself am not an expert, whether there's 45 feet or 50 feet of setback, I'm not an expert in that, but I think the three things that we should be able to look at are, one, has anything, are there any glaring omissions? Is there anything in this document, after the many, many hours that the volunteers did, is there something missing that should be put in? Secondly, are there any contradictions? Basically, our other, our current document is rife with contradictions and impasses. Are there any, do all the sections kind of tie together? And the third thing that I think is, we debate this, that we should look at, are the, are the standards evenly applied? In other words, is there a clear process? If I go to the building department and I get a message that says, this is what you need to do, will the planner agree? Is there just a process that says, this is how you, this is how you do it? And I think we should look at the document in those three ways, and make our amendments to those kinds of things, and if we do that, then we'll be sending, sending a message to Reading and people outside of Reading that we're open for business, that we have a clear and precise way of doing business, that we're friendly to development. I just don't think that we, that we can afford to delay this anymore, so I'm going to encourage everybody to, to vote the amendment down, and also, I wish Chief Cormier were here, because he'd be our technically Sergeant of Arms, and let's just lock the door and get this done. No one leave until, because there's so many other things we have to deal with. We've got the, we've got, we've got the charter coming up, we've got, we've got issues with the school building, there's a lot of attention that this body needs to put, and I think to honor the process that the volunteers have done, to put this document in front of us, albeit it was a little bit late and a little bit sloppy, but I think now there's one set of documents that everybody can look at, that we can just plow through this and get the root canal done. Thank you.
Ms. Binder?
Angela Binder, Precinct 5. I think we should indefinitely postpone this for a number of reasons. I, I know that we now have one set of documents that were online. I didn't print them out. I know somebody who went to Kinko's and did, and went through it. My problem is not necessarily with one set or anything, although that was very problematic, but my problem is with some of the things that are being said are in the translation guide. I've gone through the translation guide. I've read things where it has said no change or very little change, and there seems to be significant changes, and I think the most important one is the proposed table of uses. In the translation guide for the proposed table of uses for Business C, it says retail store up to 35 square feet. Under our proposed, under our current zoning bylaw, retail sale, it says retail sales, Business C is no. It just says no. And under our new document, proposed table of uses, retail sales up to 35 square feet, and it says yes, and under the column where it says change, all it says is formally categorized with retail sales, new to differentiate size. There's a significant change that was made in the use in Business C. Restaurants and retail are not currently allowed as a primary use, and under the proposed table of uses, they will be allowed, and if you went through this and you read this, you would see the change. All it says is, well, it was formally categorized as this. It's not highlighted in yellow, so my problem is with the documents themselves. I don't think town meeting needs a lot more time to go over this. I would like to see CPDC go over this. I would like to see other things happen to this document, and that is why I don't think it's for town meeting to spend the next hours or a couple of days going through it. I don't like what I see in the translation guides in some of the things. I don't understand how the idea of simplify, clarify, and modernize is a reason to change use in Business C when there have been so many public discussions. So my problem is, I have read the documents, and I've attended meetings, and I've read through the minutes, and when this was pointed out to me that this is now here, I thought, holy smokes, how did that happen? And I'm sure it happened somehow, but when I was reading through the translation guide, it doesn't say this is a change, and there were other places when I'm reading the translation guide. So it's not that we now have documents, and I know somebody else, a very loyal town meeting member who's served on committees many, many years, when this was brought up to him, he said, did you realize there was a change in? And he said, well, no, I'm not actually, I'm going through the translation guide, and there was nothing in there in the translation guide that said that this is a completely different use. So that's my problem with this, and I don't think it's a matter of town meeting needing it, you know, needing, I think that it is that we need one full document, but I do think that this needs to be vetted more. I think it needs to be vetted with the people who would be affected by a change like this, and I'm sure there will be an amendment tonight that says, well, we'll change it back, but how many things are we going to change back? I mean, I really feel like what we're being given, or what we're being told was the mission of this project, is not what we have. I have a problem with being told that our bylaw doesn't fit what the community goals are, when there's been discussion about what those community goals are. So I have a real problem with this, and even if there was an amendment put forth to change this on the floor of town meeting, I have a problem with that. I have a list of changes that I would like to see. I didn't bring them. I, I mean, we've been told, no amendments, no amendments, we want to get this done. Well, now, we're being offered up tons of amendments. I don't think they should be done on the town, floor of town meeting. I don't think this was ready to come to town meeting, and I think that we should indefinitely postpone it. Thank you.
Further discussion? In the middle? Mr. Greenfield?
David Greenfield, Precinct 5. Can you hear me? I'm going to vote for postponement, and the reason is that I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of discussion that tells me that people are not quite prepared, and I think this is important. I think it's a bigger package, it's much more information, and the timeline for getting it to people cannot be like it was a normal meeting. The information has not been packaged fully and given to us. It takes a lot to deliberate to go through this material. I'll admit, I didn't open the email on Friday. I had a full weekend, so I'm sitting here as well, not fully prepared. I further think that that confusion, lack of preparedness, the intimidation is going to draw some no votes. In order to pass this, we need a two-thirds vote. Do we really think, in the state of discussion going on now, that we're going to be passing things under the current environment? I would say we respect the work that has been done, and we put it before CPDC. We get a detailed report from them. We highlight the changes of substance to a greater degree than they have been, so that those can be set out and clearly debated, and we take it from there. I don't think there's a need to rush. I think we're dishonoring the very thing we're doing if we rush, so I would say that that time for deliberation and further preparation actually respects the process. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's not my concern how you vote, it's my concern to get you good information, and I do want to just highlight, I saw an email over the weekend that I found to be quite disturbing in its tone. It talked about sneaking information in. The change that has been discussed in Business C was described quite fully at a March 2014 CPDC meeting, and it's even reflected in the minutes. So I just want to assure you, nothing has been snuck in. You may not like it, and that's perfectly legitimate, but all this discussion has been at open, public meetings, it's been noticed in the minutes of the meetings. There's a reason why CPDC chose whatever they chose. That doesn't mean that you have to agree with them, but I just want to at least lay to rest the fear that somehow there's this nefarious agenda going on, because I've seen the tone of some of the emails going around, and frankly, that's just not how we should do business in Reading.
Further discussion? No appearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Tofoya.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I rise to support the motion to indefinitely postpone, and just a note, I am always very disturbed when people make general references to disturbing emails without specific examples. The amount of detail included in these documents is, you know, overwhelming. We were, Megan and I were the ones who went to Kinko's and printed out two copies of the draft bylaws of October 24th, you know, over the weekend. It was 162 pages, and we spent Sunday going through it, you know, line by line, and that's when I, you know, as I assume other people, discovered the change with respect to Business C. It's very difficult to see these things unless people draw them to your attention, because your eye is caught by the fact that in the table of uses, we've added many, many different use cases, and it was only by digging through that that I did notice that the, the change was proposed. And it was only by digging through that that I did notice that the change was proposed for Business C. So I contacted people, say, hey, does anybody have any idea what's going on here? I got no, you know, real clear answer. I appreciate the Town Manager showing us the minutes, but I haven't seen any emails that, you know, questioned anyone's integrity in this process. You know, my concern was whether the people who are directly affected by this, that were engaged in many, many months of discussions on this kind of issue, were anybody actually notified them that this issue was under discussion? And from the reaction I received yesterday, apparently not. And so, you know, they, you know, raised their hand on this issue of concern about, you know, this particular change. But this is just one thing. This is, you know, a couple of cells in a spreadsheet which were changed that, you know, we had to, you know, discover, basically, in the course of reviewing this 162-page document, which was a cut-down from the three large documents that we had been working from for the two previous nights of Town Meeting. You know, my solution is not that any of this work get lost, that everybody assemble their comments, forward them on to CPDC. They hold, you know, a series of public meetings, or whatever they feel the need is to refine this, and we move forward. The thing to keep in mind is, we do not have the entire bylaw here. The work is only half-done. There are significant sections that haven't been completed by either the Zoning Advisory Committee or CPDC. So we're going to be having these discussions in several months. And you should also know that when we began this process, you know, we were informed, basically, that we would have a complete rewritten document for consideration. And instead, now, we're doing it in these pieces. And I think we've run into some of the problematic aspects of that approach. So once again, you know, I'm encouraging folks to vote for indefinite postponement, and I'd certainly support the idea that Mr. Schubert put forward for an instructional motion that would indicate that, you know, it was the desire of this body to move ahead with these discussions sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Calvobachi?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Erin Calvobachi, Precinct 5, and I was a member of the Zoning Advisory Committee, representing the business aspect of our community. And I ask that we not vote to indefinitely postpone it, because you know what? We have a place to start. And to echo what Ms. Toomey had said, our bylaw, as it stands, is very difficult to understand. And to echo what Mr. Berman said, this is what is going to help us with our economic development that is so necessary and important to this community. We have a working document, and we understand that. This has been the most arduous task that I believe this group has been taxed with. And to those who have, say, tonight, and have had, say, in the previous meetings, I ask that you get more involved. We did not have many people from the town at our meetings. And that is what we need. On the floor of Town Meeting is not when we should be having these discussions. It should have been at our meetings. So please consider that, and please respect the time that we had all put in, and know that this is just a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Diderio?
Right, Diderio, Precinct 6. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The way I see it is that, you know, I really hate to say this, but I would be more at ease if we voted to postpone it. And let me tell you why briefly. First of all, I would like to say, the reason I'm saying this is my fault, and I would echo the previous speaker. For me, I'm just, I'm not comfortable because I don't have a handle on it. That's basically it. I did not go to the meetings, which I should have. This weekend, I was busy. I was in Brooklyn, visiting my daughter. Got in Sunday night, Monday morning, I downloaded it, and for probably three and a half hours, I went through it on my computer. I just reached the point, I was mentally exhausted, but you can't do that the day of the meeting. I realized that. I needed to do that weeks ago. I would certainly appreciate, like, having something, having CPDC go over it and kind of give me a, spoon-feed me a little bit, so I could get a handle on maybe the important things. I'm certainly okay if this amendment is not passed and that we do it tonight. I can certainly do that. But I can just say, you know, I just, I could say, I don't have a handle on it, I'm really not comfortable, but I have to take responsibility on myself for that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Megan Young, Precinct 4. And I'm just composing this now in my head, so excuse me if I'm not clear. When I heard about moving this forward because we need economic development, and because businesses need, we need to improve our business climate, I guess I stumbled, I guess it really concerned me, and I thought about, okay, was it always the intention of Business C for, you know, by the ZAC, was it, or by whatever? Was it, was it a priority to make that an economic area? And if it was, why wasn't that in front of me? We heard about accessory apartments, medical marijuana, all of the things that we were supposed to pay attention to. And this is a significant difference in a zone, a business zone. The people that live in that business zone haven't been informed. And it, and knowing that right now where we are in Redding is dealing with a business that's coming into a residential area, and we're not liking it, I'm not sure that we're not doing the same thing to that business area, that business use, without them having a say, and me making a, deciding to vote on it without hearing their concerns, or if they would even be interested in that. It might be they would, but I don't know. And I don't know that being locked up with the hundred of you, who I like very much, would make me feel like I'm making a good decision for a group of people who I also know and love. So I can't, I just don't think I can go forward, knowing that there's been no public conversation with that community, that business zone, which has residential, that hasn't been informed in the same way we were informed of major changes that have gone on so far. So I will be voting to indefinitely postpone, so that we can allow that group of people to have a say, the same way that we permitted, that we allowed the summer AV folks to have a say, and to share with us how they feel before we voted on it. So I guess that's where I stand, and I thank you for listening.
Further discussion? Yes?
Steve Herrick, Precinct 8. I think, well, first off, I want to say that I have a great deal of respect for all the work that's gone into the documents that we've been trying to review the past couple of weeks. This is incredibly important to the town. What strikes me when I hear this conversation going on, and when I try to attempt to review the documents, I have sat down for an entire evening and read every single page of what I see here, and it is incredibly overwhelming, and I, what strikes me is that, I went through the back of this, and there are warrants back here, there's a listing of all the warrants that have gone into this document, and I lost count, but it's somewhere around two, I'm sorry, there's somewhere around 200-plus warrants that have been passed over the years since 1942. I'm sure Bill Brown gave you the exact number. But if there are fundamental changes, if we wipe the slate clean, and I don't think, I'm not suggesting we have, maybe that's an overstatement. If we're changing fundamental aspects of the way that we are zoning this town, and this Business C issue is just one of them that might be buried in there, and I don't think, I don't think that I'm, I've read this carefully enough to understand the other fundamental changes. Every single one of these warrants, I'm sure, invoked a great deal of discussion at Town Meeting when it came up. And I don't think we're respecting the process if we move forward quickly without a full understanding of any changes that might be in here that we don't understand. I think we need to pay due diligence to this document, and what it means to the future of this town. And I think a little bit more time is warranted, so that every member here, every member of this, the Town Meeting, understands what it is that they're voting on. And if there are substantive changes, that we give it due diligence, the same diligence that these warrants that have been carefully crafted through the years to guide the future of this town, that was given. I think we owe our ancestors, we owe our descendants that respect. And I do respect all the work of the committee, and I'm not trying to dispense it. I think we're almost there. But I do think we need to take that extra step to make sure that everybody here does understand the substantive changes that might live in this document, so that we make the right decision for the future of Redding. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? None appearing? Are we ready for the vote? Further discussion? I'm sorry.
Ann Landry, Precinct 5. With all due respect to the proponents of this motion, I would urge my fellow Town Meeting members to vote against it. I think it would be great to be able to get to the substance of the conversation, and to have a full airing of all questions and concerns, and so we can work through them going, going section by section. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Struble, Precinct 7. Point of information, if I might. The motion to indefinitely postpone, can that be made at any time during discussion of the motion? Can it be made, say, for example, if this motion fails? Can it be made later? Not necessarily by the same person, but by anybody. Could it be made at any time?
No, this is your chance at it.
The only chance, thank you.
Yes, if it gets voted down, it could not come up again. Further discussion? Yes, on the aisle?
Paul McNeese, Precinct 2. I would urge to continue on the discussion that we're having. I think it's important to have it tonight, but I think we move forward and actually review this document. I think the reality is, whether we do it tonight, or we do it in three months or six months, whenever we come back, however we want this process to happen, the reality is, it's going to happen collectively with us here, working through it as a group. So I'd like to see us move forward, do it tonight. To anyone who kind of has a fear that we are rushing through anything, we've now spent two and a half-plus hours debating whether or not we want to have the debate, so I don't think there's any risk that we're going to rush through anything. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Greg Salvatelli, Precinct 6. I move the question.
This is a motion to end debate on the indefinite postponement. It requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Brown, would you take the honors for the right section and the Board of Selectmen? Oh, yeah, I will mention that. Mr. Crook, would you take the right center? Mr. Rushworth, would you take my left center? Ms. Russell, would you take the left? Before we take this vote, however, I would point out, if we should end debate, there will be a secondary motion under this article that would take up one small piece of this. But we'll get to that if that is necessary. Okay, so right now, the motion before us is to end debate. All those in favor of ending debate, please rise.
Moderator?
Oh, excuse me?
How are we going to do the countdown front? Who is going to count the selectmen?
Mr. Brown will count the selectmen. Do we have Town Meeting members down here? No. Okay. Okay. Once again, all those in favor of ending debate, please rise.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three. And all those opposed to ending debate, please rise.
Seven.
Seven.
Two.
Two.
One.
One.
Zero.
Zero. The vote being 121 in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, the question has been moved, debate has ended. We will now move to the question of indefinite postponement. This requires a majority vote. So we will take a show of hands. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the moderator's in doubt. Again, I ask people, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, please rise.
Eleven.
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 Eighteen.
Eighteen. Twenty-three. Twenty-three. And those opposed?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Seven.
Seven.
Eleven.
Eleven. The vote being 63 in the affirmative, 66 in the negative. The indefinite postponement has failed. We will now move on to the main motion. We will take this up as we do with the budget. We will take it up in nine separate sections, and as each section comes up, we will have discussion on that section, and any potential amendments will be taken up at that time. I believe there was a request to take up Section D first, is that correct?
A point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Tafoya?
Yes. Some of these sections are actually interconnected. For instance, Section 2 has definitions.
Thank you, you're right.
Well, I will point, he was asking about the sections being interconnected. I was referring to the sections A through I on the motion sheet. Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Do you still have a question, though?
Yeah, because if, as we go through something like Section 2, which is definitions, but then we actually go further in the document, and we find items that we think might actually, we would be served to have a definition for, even though we've passed Section 2 at that time, would you still allow?
I would allow that. That's a good point. When it's practical, we will allow that. Okay. As I stated earlier, there was a request to have Section D first, is that correct? If not, I'll go back to Section A. Okay, we'll start with Section A, then. Section A, which begins deleting Section 2.0 definitions, and it continues on. Is there discussion? Yes, on the far right? Mr. O'Neill? Mr. O'Neill?
John O'Neill, Precinct 4. And my ask, for those of us who are hard of hearing, that people speak up. I'm having a very difficult time this evening. I don't know if it's the microphone system or whatever, but, you know, I don't want to have to ask for an accommodation which would inconvenience everyone, but, so, anyway. My amendment, and I understand it would be deemed to be a friendly amendment, is on Article 2, on definitions, on senior independent living. The intent, I believe, is contradicted by the language. It says, it's on page 12, if people, it says, "An extended or intermediate care facility that provides dwelling units for residents over the age of 55 and continues on." However, the language, "extended or intermediate care facility," is only used for institutionalized populations in Massachusetts. And in fact, for at least the last 25 years, intermediate care has only been used when applying to the people with development disabilities, and not to seniors. So I would suggest that the language read "a facility that provides," so remove extended or intermediate care facility, and just say "a facility that provides," and continue on. on from there. And I think, an indication, if people have been reading the Chronicle, there's been an advertising advertisement for senior independent living for the last couple of weeks, and you'll notice that not once is the word "care" mentioned, because it isn't. It's contradictory. Usually, there's three types of, like, an extended continuing care retirement community has independent living, assisted living, and skilled nursing facility. They are three separate entities. This confuses all three. So what you, what you want to do is separate it off, independent living facility, and yes, extended or intermediate care should be removed.
Mr. Lasher, is that the change that you just put up? I can just barely turn around the corner here. Oh, yeah. Okay, so this is the one, his proposed change is up here, then. Okay. Is there a second to that, by the way? Do you have? She does. Okay, she has it. Okay, thank you. Further discussion on either Section A or that proposed amendment? Mr. Tafoya?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Ben Tafoya, Precinct 4. I guess I would start with kind of a general question. And again, this, to the point earlier, is that many of these definitions relate to things that are in Section 5 of the Table of Uses. There are a number of new definitions that are placed in this draft zoning bylaw, but there are a number of new uses that were introduced under Table 5.3 that don't have specific definitions in the definition section. So, you know, things like an age-restricted multifamily dwelling, a tourist and trailer camp, a beacon, a commercial amusement, indoor recreation. You know, that's just sort of some of them. And I didn't know if there was sort of a method to this, as to why some things had definitions and why others didn't, or whether, you know, folks were interested in working through definitions for some of these issues that aren't specifically defined, that originate from the Table of Uses in Section 5.
Is there a response?
Sure. Age-restricted multifamily dwelling, tourist and trailer camp, beacon, commercial amusements, indoor recreation, accessory convenience store, skilled trades facility, these are some of the ones that I had identified that are in the Table of Uses. A couple of them were in the old Table of Uses, or the existing Table of Uses, and never were defined in the existing bylaw either. But, you know, that was an issue I raised. I just wanted to raise. Oh, yeah. Car wash is another one. We all think we know what it is, but do we need to actually have a definition? Because, you know, my car wash might not be the same as yours.
Is there a response? Mr. Mearies?
I'll give it a try. The idea was, most words have commonly understood definitions, and therefore don't need to be defined. If we defined every word we used in the whole bylaw, you'd have, you know, thousands of definitions. So you have to assume that most words have their commonly understood meaning. The words that seem to have some uncertainty about what they meant, we tried to define. Whether that's a perfect delineation of every, of every term, that's for you to judge. But the idea was, commonly understood terms don't need a definition. Things that are not commonly understood need a definition.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Tuttle, Precinct 3, Zoning Advisory Committee and CPDC. One of the things that we were doing deliberately in the definition section was to remove regulatory language. We wanted them to be, as much as possible, a pure definition without creating a separate restriction or regulation on the items being defined. And I think we, in most cases, achieved that. But it's also, as you say, we did not want to have a dictionary.
Further discussion? Mr. Brown?
Yes, I am here tonight, and I've been here the other nights. There's a couple of definitions I think that should be in here, because every time zoning comes up, I hear it. One is nibby and the other is snob.
Further discussion? Oh, Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Megan Young, Precinct 4. I do think one that we do need to find is commercial amusement, mostly because if you look in the uses, "commercial amusement" is something that the Board of Selectmen do by special permit or something, right? Is that correct? So if perhaps, so if I'm looking at my definitions and I'm in this business, and I decide that I want to use "commercial amusements," and it says in Business A, "it is by special permit by the selectmen," however, place of assembly is yes, so I don't have to go to the Board of Selectmen for that place of amusement. So I'm not sure what "commercial amusement" is. If it's like King's Bowling, by the way, under our definitions, place of assembly actually lists a bowling alley, and its primary use would be a bowling alley. But they have amusements, they have drinks and bar and whatever. So where, how would that determination be made if there was not a definition for "commercial amusement"? Thank you. And by the way, I did look up "commercial amusement" in a couple places. Framingham District did their zoning bylaw, so I do have a definition, but it's called "indoor amusement facility." And I don't know if that's the same thing, but I pulled a couple of ones out that if we did want to add that particular definition, I do have a, well, at least a couple of options. Thanks.
Further discussion? Yes, on the far corner?
Thank you. I hope everybody can hear me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Stanley Moran, Precinct 7. I'd like to make a motion to, oh, I must preface this, I do have a financial interest in agriculture. I have one hive of bees that produced $400 worth of honey this year, and I have chickens, and I get one to three dozen eggs a week. So just want to reveal that. I'm making a motion to remove poultry and bees from the definition of agriculture.
Is there a second? Second. Continue.
Okay. Bees currently are not regulated by the town of Redding, and that by right, anybody can have a beehive in their yard. Bees do serve an important need. They pollinate fruit trees, nut trees, berries, vegetables. Bees are responsible for about 30% of the pollination of the food that we eat, and currently there are no regulations. And under, further in the regulations, they're proposing that you have to have them 50 feet away from a property line under agriculture. Very few communities regulate bees, and much, many of them have much more reasonable regulations in terms of the distance from property lines. And in terms of poultry, I have a license from the Board of Health to keep up to six chickens. And, you know, there are probably people in this room who think, oh, you know, he's an old hippie, or something like that. But there are other town meeting members from various sides of the aisles who have raised chickens in our community. And, you know, I've talked to some of my neighbors who, when they were growing up 60 years ago in Somerville, they had chickens. You know, chickens are not something to be afraid of, and the Board of Health has plenty of regulations to protect the chickens and protect people, and, you know, they're not a source of vermin or other things. So I suggest that we stick with the current regulations of poultry and let those bees get out there and do their business. Thank you.
Mr. Mearies?
So just to be clear, this time it's really loud. Just to be clear, agriculture is a protected use under the State Zoning Act. So if you want to protect agricultural uses, as you must under the state law, you want to include everything that the state includes. So the state includes the raising of poultry. The state also includes the raising of bees. In their definition of agriculture, they are protected. We must, under certain circumstances, permit that by right. And when I say "under certain circumstances," what I'm referring to is if the land area is more than five acres, or if the land area is more than two acres and the person involved makes more than $500 per year on it, that meets the definition of agriculture, and it's protected. So we, it's probably not a good idea to start taking things out of the definition because it will make our bylaw inconsistent with state law.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Schubert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Schubert, Precinct 7. Town Council, to follow up on that, then. The previous quest or discussion is, so if, if the property is less than two acres, which most of them are, and I'm sure the previous speakers, that's their case, are they then protected even though the definition, so either way, they're protected? If the definition still contains bees, or if it doesn't contain bees, are they protected still either way? You said the state law said two acres. It had to have two acres in order to be protected. And so, in this case, probably most, anybody in Redding, there are few that are two acres or more for the lot size?
Are you looking up an answer? Okay.
So you see, what we have done here is we have divided agricultural uses that are protected by, under state law. And then the next line says, "other agricultural uses." They're all permitted by right.
Further discussion? Ms. Young?
Okay, I'm getting the hang of this. I'd like to make an amendment for, to include "commercial amusement facility." The definition is "indoor entertainment, amusement, or recreational facility."
Okay, hold on one second.
Sorry.
This is quickly going to get out of hand.
Yep.
I think we're going to have to change the way we do this. I will come back to you.
Sure.
I think from this, we may have several amendments on this. We may, I think we're going to stick with discussion on the amendments as each one comes up, and then we will vote on them, and then move back to the main.
Come back to the ones that aren't in the definitions?
So I will come back to you.
Cool. All right. Thank you very much.
Right now, we still, we have two amendments. After this, I will, I will only allow one, and then we'll, we'll discuss that. Yes, right here. Mr. Maun?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jamie Maun, Precinct 4. A question, if I remember correctly, you can currently have poultry, and you do not have to be 50 feet from the property line with the, with the chicken coop.
Mr. Tuttle, point of order?
These are definitions. These are not regulations. You are discussing something that is in an entirely different section of the bylaw.
I understand, but what I want to know is, if we take poultry, if we leave poultry in the definition of agriculture, does that mean that it will have to be set back 50 feet from the property line? And by taking it, poultry out of the definition, does that mean it can be closer than 50 feet? Which I think was the intent, but I might be wrong.
Mr. Mearies? I'm sorry?
I'm not sure where the 50 feet from the property line exists. It's not in the zoning bylaw. So I don't know where that, that provision exists. However, I would like to amend the answer I gave a minute ago. So if you, I indicated that, that agricultural uses that are not protected by state law are permitted everywhere on that table, but there are two, there are two use tables. In the residential zone, agricultural uses that are not protected by state law are subject to a special permit. But I don't know where the 50, 50 feet comes from. If that's a Board of Health regulation, that's not affected by, by the zoning bylaw.
Okay, continuing on discussion on the two amendments in, in front of us. Is there further discussion? Yes.
Richard Moore, Precinct 2. On the last point, you asked where it was. It's in Section 4.3.6b, agricultural uses. Any structure is used for garaging or screening of tools, farm, machinery, or vehicles, or for providing housing pens or enclosures for lice hawks should be located at least 50 feet from any property line. So there it is. That's a good old search and word.
What section is it?
It's new, 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 in the new section, it's 5.6.4, also b. If you will, it's in Translation Guide. Come on. Translation, Translation Guide number two, on page 42.
Ms. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Elaine Webb, Precinct 1. So I just want to clarify, because I am in favor of keep allowing people to have bees and chickens, and it seems to me that if we take the, those out of that definition, then they no longer fall into the, on the accessory use table of the residential table, they would no longer fall into agricultural use eligible for protection under Mass General Law, and under residential, it's yes, and all the way across, yes, 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 yes. So if we take them out, we remove the bees and the poultry, then it goes into other agricultural use, and I am speaking mostly about the residential, and you would then fall into this, having to have a special permit in all those? So it's, I'm questioning it. I'm trying to. I want to keep, allow people to have the bees and the chickens. I can't figure out.
Okay. If you take it out of the definition of agriculture, then it's in limbo. It's not, otherwise, it doesn't appear on the use table.
Okay.
So, so if you exclude it from agriculture, it not only isn't, not only is it inconsistent with state law, but then in the part of it where it says agricultural use is not protected by state law, the, it's not included in that either, because you've taken it out of the definition of agriculture. So if you want to protect those uses, you need to leave it in the definition.
And if, if there's an issue with where structures are located, that's a different point in the discussion?
That's, and I'm sorry, I did not know, and, and I couldn't quickly find where the, where it is, but I, but there is a, a provision in there for agriculture. it is. But I, but there is a, a provision in there for agricultural uses that does indicate that a 50-yard setback. That's in a different section. It's in Section 5.6.
Okay. But we can address how far the beehives or the chickens can be at a different point in time, as long as we keep them in the definition of agriculture?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on either of the two amendments? Yes, on the, by far right?
Charles Stanley Moran, Precinct Seven. I'm having a hard time understanding how having to go to get a special permit for either a chicken coop or a beehive simplifies things and makes government more friendly. So I think we're sort of defeating the purpose of the, making these changes in this regard. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Crook.
Stephen Crook, Precinct Two. A point of order. It seems like we're straying from a discussion of the new Section Two definitions into a discussion of the new Section Five use regulations at this time.
Well, we have two proposed amendments in that Section A. And that's what we're discussing.
In Section Two, no?
Yes.
I mean, what we're discussing one of these right now is definition, that definition that includes poultry and bees, among other things.
I think the point.
But we seem to be straying to a discussion about how far chicken coops need to be in Section Five.
Right, which we said would come up later on.
Which is certainly worthy. I'm just not sure this is the time to discuss the distances.
Which is why the previous speaker said that would come up at a later time. Yes. Further discussion on the amendments? Okay, we will take the Second Amendment first, which is the one that would remove the poultry and bees. All those in favor of that amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion does not carry. And then we go back to the First Amendment, which was made by Mr. O'Neill, and I have forgotten what it was. Senior Independent Living. Thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor of that amendment, please raise your hand. Was there a point of order? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, take out the words, under Senior Independent Living, we would take out the words as extended, or immediate, or, excuse me, it's all crossed out. In extended or intermediate care, we would remove those words. Okay, all set? Okay. All those in favor of that amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. We are now back into Section A. And Ms. Young, you had a proposed amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Megan Young, Precinct Four. I would like to make amendment to add "commercial amusement facility." I have a definition. If you want to, just type it in. I don't know if that, or do you want me to read it? How would you like me to do it? Read it slowly. Okay. Commercial, commercial amusement facility. I feel like I'm in a spelling bee. Indoor entertainment, comma, amusement or recreation facility, comma, unless exempted by law, such as movie theater, bowling alley, billiard room, or tennis club. Next sentence. Okay. Billiard room or tennis club. And I guess this is where the selectmen would come in, if I'm reading this right. "Noisy activities shall be at least 100 feet away from lot line." Well, I didn't come up with it. Remy Hemden. So, I mean, so I, maybe I guess if the intent is, I guess my question is first, I'm making amendment, I don't even really know what commercial amusement is, yet I know select wouldn't have to make a decision on it. So I think it's important to have that definition, so there's a clear delineation between the two. So I'm assuming it's about noise. Is that true? Do you guys know?
Mr. Malashir.
If I could just ask a question as to why you'd use the word facility as opposed to forget the word facility?
Forget it.
Oh, so cross that out?
You can forget that. I just was reading verbatim from them.
Okay.
I don't really care. It doesn't look like we've used.
Because a, because a commercial amusement facility is quite different than commercial amusement in somewhere.
Okay, so, yeah, I think that's a great point. Take it out, please. But again, my question is, I'm assuming that the reason we don't have a defin, it's something that the selectmen have to make a decision on. I'm assuming it's about noise. Is that a correct assumption?
Mr. Malashir.
I suppose it could be any number of things. I know one of the things that it's most often in front of the board is simply to license the activity. And in some cases in the past, there's been a fee associated with the license. So for instance, the amount of TV screens a place has is considered under this. If you go back to the beginning of Jordan's furniture, when it had that horse racing thing, that was clearly, you know, you know, if this was one of those uses. And I don't know what other kinds of uses there are, whether, you know, climbing up the ropes now is or not. It's, it's not something that comes often in front of the selectmen, but the purpose it comes is for licensing. And any of the selectmen current or present, feel free to speak up.
Great. I, I do think a definition's needed to, to distinguish between when the selectmen make the decision and when it's just a regular use.
Is there a second to that? Second. Ms. West? Will you, will you complete? I'm sorry.
I am. I think I am.
What I wanted to do is just offer an alternate definition, because there's a potential that we could have commercial recreation that's outside and not just inside. And we've tried to limit listing long lists, because then if you don't have it in the list, that can create a problem. What I've found here online, just looking, is the provision of recreation-related products or services by private enterprise for a fee. That, that's something simple, and it seems like it covers it potentially.
Mr. Mayarys, did you have a comment? Well, I'm assuming you're not taking from the amendment on that. If not, you still have, your amendment is still before the body.
Anything you all say is great. I don't know what it is. I'm relying on you to provide the definition. I just found one. I didn't know what it meant. I just think it's important that we define it in the definitions. That's all my concern is.
Mr. Mayarys.
Whatever definition you come up with, it's important that definition clearly distinguish between a commercial amusement and something that we already have defined, which is place of assembly. So right now, we have a definition in here, place of assembly, which is a facility providing accommodation for groups of people to gather, either regularly or occasionally, in an enclosed space, including theaters, cinemas, bowling alleys, lecture halls, and banquet facilities. So if you want to define commercial amusements to include some of those things, or if you want to switch this around, just when, at the end of the day, we, we need to know whether the example uses are in one category or the other. So as you're, as you're coming up with ideas, please try to keep that in mind.
Okay, right now, we have Ms. Young's amendment before us. If that should fail, we will take up yours. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Greg Savatelli, Precinct Six. Just to follow along with that comment, I had, saw that actually we have the Health, Exercise, and Fitness Club, and we use an example of a tennis club. So I'm in, I'm in favor of having a definition, but we may need to strike out tennis club because of that contradiction with the other definition that we have. Thank you.
Point of order, Ms. Snyder?
Gina Snyder, Precinct Five. I thought that what Megan, Ms. Young said was that she would accept Ms. West's definition as an amendment to her, so that we'd only be looking at the broader one.
Ms. Young, are you okay with that? Okay. Is there any objection to that becoming the amendment? No. Okay, thank you. We will, we will now refer to Ms. West's as the amendment we're talking about. Mr. Schubert? Do we have it up there? Can you read it? I cannot see from here either.
Commercial amusement, the provision of recreation-related products or services by private enterprise.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. Schubert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would also suggest to consider adding the except of adult uses. In the definitions, we've dropped adult uses, but I don't think it'd be a stretch of an imagination for somebody to say that that could qualify for commercial amusement. So I think we have zoning to describe where adult uses can occur, but it might be worth our while to have some limitation on the expanse of commercial amusement to eliminate adult uses.
Are you proposing an amendment to the?
Yes.
Would you repeat exactly what you want to add or subtract?
There we go. That's, that looks good.
Okay, so we will, we will vote on that before we vote on the amendment. Further discussion? Mr. Maun?
Jamie Maun, Precinct Four. A question, under the current system, do the numerous health clubs in Redding, are they considered commercial amusement? And do they have to get a special permit as for commercial amusement?
Do we have a response?
No.
Well, this definition would include, I believe, a fitness club. So if we pass this, then all those fitness clubs would have to come and get a special permit under this, under this provision. And also, if we don't say for a fee, it's not commercial. Could be a birthday party. So I, I would support the original definition. I think it was more applicable to what we're trying to regulate. We're not trying to regulate children's birthday parties or fitness clubs.
Mr. Tavoy?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think this might make a difference. In the table of uses, there is another category called indoor recreation, which is also not defined, but I assumed meant like health clubs.
Further discussion? Yes, on the edge.
Tom O'Rourke, Precinct Two. I understand the intent of adult uses, but I mean, literally, recreational services could be used by adults. But I think the intent is to, I'm sure, exclude adult entertainment, however that's described. I'm just not sure, you know, it's going to handle adult uses. I think that could be confusing.
Yes. Mr. Westerman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Westerman, Precinct Three. I'm looking at the definition as offered there, and I'm wondering, would that apply to REI, where they run their special programs for a fee that people pay to attend?
Do we have an answer?
Definitely recreation-related. They do things from climbing to wilderness first aid, to various incendiary trips and other things?
Mr. Mayarys?
Let me try to address your question, and then the previous comment as well. Let me try to address your question, and then the previous comment as well. Remember that there is a blanket provision that addresses accessory uses, even if they're not on the table. So anything that is customarily incidental and subordinate to a principal use is automatically authorized if the principal use is authorized. So in the case of REI, they have a retail store, and the various activities that they run are in conjunction with their retail store. I would assume, without knowing anything about what actually is going on there, I would assume that those are all customarily incidental and subordinate, and they are permitted exactly because it's a store. So there's no need to address that further here. So.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure I understood the intent as well as the verbiage. Thank you.
Okay. Now, previous comment asked about adult uses. If you're going, if you want to use, exclude adult uses in this definition, then you probably should make a reference to, to the section that addresses adult uses, which is 5.6.2. So I think what you want to do is adult uses as defined in Section 5.6.2.2.
Who wasn't made that?
For now, that would be okay. Remember that one of the things that we will eventually do is we'll move all of the definitions to the definition section, and at that point, we might want to futz with that a little bit more. But for now, that would be okay.
The town council, Mr. Schubert, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to that? Is there any objection? Okay, not appearing, that'll be, okay, Ms. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Camille Anthony, Section Five. I don't know if anybody else is feeling the angst I am. This just doesn't seem right. I, I don't know, and I've got to tell you, I feel like it's leaderless up there. I wish somebody, I don't care who, but I wish somebody were up there at least leading, looking at whomever's supposed to speak next. I really feel like we're leaderless at this point. But my, what I'm wondering is, if we need a definition, and there's all these questions, why can't we go through the section and say, "We need a definition for this. We need a definition for that," and somebody needs to explore it? But if we do this, we're going to be here till Christmas. I, I'm just, I think the process right now is broken. And I would like, and I have no idea, because we haven't heard, we're starting on a section, how many sections are we going to do? It seems as though we go through the sections, we make our, our points known where we have problems, they go back. I mean, we certainly don't have to vote tonight on definitions. At some point, we've got to vote. But if we, if we're going to continue with this, we're going to lose people. Thank you.
Yes?
Hi, Nancy Toomey, Precinct Three. If I could just recommend, this document is a living and working document. It's not perfect. And I really accept for a few, perhaps, words that need to be changed here or there, or some specific things that we're concerned about, that we would like to see in this document. I would really hate to start putting in specifics like this. I, I don't know whether commercial amusement is planning to come up before the selectmen before March. I don't know if it's going to come up anytime in the near future. But I would suggest that perhaps the process could move along if we said, "This is something that should be looked at," and perhaps it comes back to us in March as a definition that has been fully vetted by the selectmen, by the CPDC, by everybody who's worried about it, and can give us then a response as to what that definition needs to be. I'd hate to put this in and then find out that it messes something else up. I'd hate to put this in and then find out that it messes something else up. So right now, the document is really cohesive, and I think we've gotten ourselves into problems in the past with this document because amendments have been made that are not necessarily consistent with what our intent is. So I would vote, I would recommend that people vote down this particular amendment and hope that it can be taken under advisement by the CPDC, and then back in March after a full vetting, it comes back to us and we add it back in. This is not a one-time, that's all, we're done. This is going to be ongoing, probably for the next 10 years. Who knows?
On the, oh, Mr. Schubert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Schubert, Precinct 7. With all due respect to the previous speaker, it doesn't take that much of a memory to understand that there was a time when we didn't have any protection against, or zoning protection against adult uses, and we had an adult bookstore on Main Street just north of Franklin. And the community outrage really forced us to come up with, A, a definition, and B, some zoning restrictions. Therefore, commercial amusement, I think, without a definition exposes the community to what we spent much time trying to prevent, and so I would advocate that we maintain some definition that at least restricts adult use as defined in Section 5.6.2.2. Thank you.
Mr. Arena?
John Arena, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, is there a parliamentary procedure whereby the method we're on, which is to propose formal changes, could instead permit us to identify a section that needs further attention without specificity to what that attention needs to be? Rather, a definition is missing, there's some need for greater clarity, so that we can move on and cover some ground? Is there a parliamentary vehicle to accomplish that with?
Well, ultimately, you have to take a vote on the entire amendment. If you've questioned something, it doesn't change what you're voting on. So there is a problem. If you propose a particular amendment, you have something to choose from. If you, you're not voting on recommendations, if you understand what I'm saying?
I understand. We're seeing how the sausage is made here, and it takes sometimes a bit of time to get it right. As a practical matter, adult uses are actually covered in an entirely different section. So to the degree that they are referenced here, that use needs to be compared against the adult use section. As a second point, commercial amusement has never been defined in our bylaws formally. It's used, but the term's never had a definition, and to my knowledge, it's never had an issue. The third point is, all uses of commercial amusement are under the special provision by the Board of Selectmen, so it's not by right. All those would lead me to believe, at least in this case, to move on, echoing Ms. Toomey's points. Perfection is a goal, but it can't be our point to move on. I think good enough for this section, we can continue on, and these will continue to be amended. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes. Mr. Doxer?
Mark Doxer, Precinct 1. I'm wondering if there's a way in this definition, rather than defining what is and what isn't, just to say, provision of recreation-related products or services by private enterprise, not elsewhere defined? Not elsewhere defined. So specifically, adult use is elsewhere defined, so that wouldn't be required in the definition. Maybe this is a friendly. To Mr. Mayares's original point, that we need to be careful about what we put in that's already defined, can't we just put in language that says, not previously defined, or not elsewhere defined?
Mr. Mayares?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of a nice way to say that, but the, I don't think not elsewhere defined helps us very much. Because then we can debate what is and what is not elsewhere defined. And the definition really means that anyway. That is to say, when you have a use, and it could be in this or it could be in that, somebody's going to have to make a judgment, generally the building inspector, does this qualify under this or does it qualify under that? And the one that's more specific is the one that would tend to dominate. So certainly, if somebody asked me which one it was, I would go with whichever is more specific. So not elsewhere defined is probably not good drafting form, I'm sorry.
Further discussion? Oh, yes, on the edge?
Marie Ferrari, Precinct 5. Mr. Mayares, could you tell me, is there much of a difference between place of assembly and commercial amusement as we're looking at it right now? I mean, we're prohibiting or allowing, I think, theaters, cinemas, bowling alleys, lecture halls, accommodation for groups of people to gather either regularly or occasionally. What are we trying to accomplish with commercial amusement? That's, I'm having difficulty with this in the accomplishment of what it is.
Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Tuttle, Precinct 3. I don't recall exactly when it occurred, but the issue is not an exclusive use for commercial amusement. It's most often an accessory use. There was an issue that came up with pinball machines at Fuddruckers in Jordans. And the reason for the definition is not primarily as a principal use, but is primarily as an accessory use, where we want to have some opportunity. And in fact, the Board of Selectmen, I believe, claimed that control because of that circumstance.
Further discussion? Not appearing. Oh, yes. Ms. Lloyd?
I'm Patricia Lloyd from Precinct 8. I've been struggling with how to explain and understand whether we should go through all of these definitions and come up with new ones at this point. I think it's important to note that the people who did the work on this worked very hard on it, and I really support hearing everyone's concerns about it. I really do. But I think in some respects, for example, if you look at the table of uses, it includes under recreational uses, commercial amusements, indoor recreation, and place of assembly, and only place of assembly specifically defined. It's important to note that when we're putting a bylaw in place, it is not meant to be the be-all and end-all and define everything, and we don't want it to be. We want the zoning Board of Appeals to be able to look at situations as they come up and decide what this best fits under. I don't think anyone sitting here today can come up with definitions for every possible outcome or every possible thing that's going to come up in front of the board. And as much as I want to hear, I really do, the concerns about what happens if this comes up or what happens if this comes up, that's an important discussion to have. I don't think that the definitional section is the place to start changing things. Thank you.
Further discussion? Not appearing. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Megan Young, Precinct 4. So I guess I'm confused, because I went to the CPDC meetings, couple of them, and they were very concerned about, you know, making sure they broaden the use cases so that it wouldn't go to zoning Board of Appeals, in fact, they can make a decision on a use. So they wanted the uses defined. I'm assuming that the ZAC committee went through these definitions. I'm assuming that they said which ones we should include or not include. Yet, when I look at, I forget what it's called, what's the one, where it's age-restricted, multifamily? Is that the one that's missing? You know, when you get something like that and you put it out as a new definition, but what age is, what age do we actually mean as a town, and that's not defined? I'm thinking if we introduced a use, we must have had an idea of what we meant by that and probably should put it in a definition as every other area in that table is defined except for that area. So I guess more than anything, I'd just like to hear the logic, that maybe like a style guide, for lack of a better term, about how they determined what definitions are in here and which aren't included, and why they're not included. When two out of three of them are included, why would you not include the third one? I guess I was just trying to figure out the logic of this decision. And I guess the more that we would say, oh, well, it's not perfect, let's send it back to CPDC to work on those definitions, they'd get themselves into the same situation that they're in. You've created a use case and you don't have a definition, so my definition and your definition are different, so who's right? Well, we don't know. And therein lies the problem with what CP, or actually what CPDC said their problem currently was. So I really, I absolutely hear everybody that says, why are we doing this? I guess I'm wondering about where was the logic about including or not including definitions, and I think that might guide us forward. Thank you.
Further discussion? Not appearing. We will, it's getting a little confusing, but I'll explain what we're doing. We have a proposed amendment that reads, the provision of recreation-related products and services by private enterprises. We further have an amendment proposed to that amendment that adds the words, except for adult uses as defined in Section 5.6.2.2. We are currently working on that amendment to the amendment. We'll be voting on that. All those in favor of that amendment to the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Now we will vote on the amendment as amended. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion carries. Any further business under Section A? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Harry Simmons, Precinct 4. I think I got a simple one, all right? I'd like to correct an error, I believe, on page 10, lot width. There's a diagram there. All right. The definition is arbitrary. If you read it, it just says the width of a lot. The diameter of a circle that's in, that's in, and it is tangent to the front, front lot, front line. If you look to the left where the cul-de-sac is, the definition there of lot width, if you go up one on the trapezoidal, it's tangent to the bottom line. Who says that that's the right line? But, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay. The trapezoid, that the thing is, that the pointer is on, if you move that circle to the right, it gets bigger, and it's still tangent to that bottom line. I propose an amendment to put in front of the word diameter on the largest of the circle. Now, you can debate whether it's the largest or the average or the smallest. The smallest is shown. So that's, that would be confusing. What is the lot width there? That's my amendment. Add the word largest. In front of diameter.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Second? Mr. Crook?
Stephen Crook, Precinct 2. Does not the phrase, "the front lot line," mean the same thing as "the frontage?", in which case the frontage would be the part of the cul-de-sac at about eight o'clock from the word lot width on that trapezoidal lot? The frontage would be this section?
I stand corrected.
Not that? Thank you.
Mr. Simmons, did you withdraw your?
I withdraw that.
Any opposition to that? No? Okay. Further discussion? Ms. Binda? Yes.
Can I bring up a new definition, or are we still?
That has been withdrawn.
Okay. I have a question with the definitions for yard front and yard rear. The current definition for yard front is the yard extending between the building and the street line and extending across the full width of the lot, and yard rear is the yard extending between the building and the rear line of the lot and extending across the full width of it. So the current definition seems to establish all boundaries, a beginning, an end, and the sides. And the new definition, and I'm not sure why it was changed, but it says the area extending away from the street line on which a line has frontage and across the full width. So it establishes the front boundary, the area extending away, but it doesn't have an end point. And I'm just thinking, in a triangular, like a pie-shaped lot, it says across the full width. Well, what if the full width, the widest part is in the rear? And the same thing with the yard rear. It establishes one boundary, but not the other one. So I don't, it seems to be more ambiguous, but I'm not sure why that was changed, and do you know what I'm saying? It currently, the current definition establishes a front, a back, and side, and the new definition just says, it extends away, but it extends away from the beginning, but where does it extend to? What is the, what is the end of the front yard? And where does the?
Mr. Tuttle, did you have any answer to that? Oh, Mr. Mayares? Hold on, Mr. Tuttle. Mr. Mayares, first, and you may want to get up.
You can probably do this as well as I can, but the point is that it's the area, the front yard is the area extending away from, I'm. The point is, the front yard is the area that extends from the street back. And the required front yard is specified in the intensity regulations that we'll get to. And that's why it doesn't say how far back, because what's important is what's required, and that depends on the intensity regulations.
Mr. Tuttle, did you have anything to add?
Basically iterate the same. We spent a long time discussing this because there has been a lot of confusion, and we ended up with both a carefully accurate but minimal definition and graphics. The front yard is from the frontage line, side yard is from the sideline, and the rear yard is from the rear line. And the dimensions are entirely controlled separately. They're controlled by the table of dimensional controls and by the physical building. In the definitions, it's more confusing to have the, a greater constraint.
Thank you.
Mr. Ma?
Jamie Maun, Precinct 4. I'm more, I thought I understood it, but now I'm confused. In this diagram, it's clear that the front yard goes from the street to the building. The backyard goes from the back of the building to the back of the lot. But if you look at the definition, it doesn't even mention the building. So it extends, if you look back at the definition, which we had up there a second ago.
Mr. Mayares?
And the reason for that is that the required front yard might be, might extend beyond the building, or it might be. the building, or it might extend left. So, the building does not, does not have anything to do with where the front yard ends. The required front yard could extend into the building.
I'm going to get lost going home then, because I won't find my building, I guess.
Further discussion? All right, we ready to move on? Mr. Moore?
Richard Moore, Precinct 2. On the definition of kennel, it says if you've got two animals in your house and a friend needs to drop off their animal for the weekend, you've just become a kennel. Is that, am I reading that right? That's on page three, I think. Two.
Okay, so the definition excludes premises where all the pets are owned by the owner or occupant, and no boarding, breeding, raising, grooming, or training is conducted for a fee or other commercial gain. So, I think it would be a stretch to say that, that somebody who drops off and suddenly, suddenly turned a normal house into a kennel.
But then the animals aren't owned by the occupant.
Indeed, that's true.
Okay. All right. A second point. Auto graveyard, I'd like to propose amendment to add back three or more vehicles. I have an industrious daughter who bought herself a used car that died. She took it apart in our driveway to try and repair it. By that definition, when she took the car apart to work on it, we became an auto graveyard. And I'd rather that did not happen.
Do we have the spot?
So, where facilities maintain, use, or operate strength for buying or selling wrecked, scrapped, ruined, or dismantled motor vehicles, and are three or more motor vehicles. I believe before motor, so. That's, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. So, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Further discussion on that amendment? All right, we will take... We, yeah, I'll come to you right after that.
Carolyn Whiting, Precinct 7. I think the three or more should go before wrecked, selling three or more wrecked, scrapped, ruined, or dismantled motor vehicles.
Is that okay with the mover? Yes? Any problems? No? Okay. Ms. Delios?
Jean Delios. I just want to point out, before we get too tangled up in this definition, that auto graveyards are prohibited. So, whether it's one, three, or however many, they're not allowed. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Not appearing. All those in favor of adding the word three or more in, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion does not carry. Further business in Section A? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Andrew Harlehey from Precinct 1. I'm going to try and set a good example and not spitball or wordsmith an amendment. But I am, just some thought for the CPD here, that the definition of abandoned, I think, is weaker than a lot of other communities. I don't think it takes into account the phenomenon of foreclosures since the 2008 housing crisis. You have a lot of zombie titles out there where real estate-owned entities, be they out-of-state banks or whatever, string out a foreclosure, so the owner is not really the owner. The owner may not be there. I'm concerned that a lot of abandonment out there is neither intentional, done by the owner, or voluntary. But I'll just leave it at that. I'm not offering amendment. Just some concern about that language. I think other communities have stronger language in combating abandoned properties.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nick Saffina, Precinct 3, and member of CPDC. I believe this definition is for a use and not a property. So, the abandonment of a use. A house is residential. I don't think it ever loses its residential use.
Further discussion on Section A? Are we ready? We will move on to Section B. Discussion on Section B. Not appearing? Oh, Ms. Delios? No? Oh, okay. We will move on to Section C. Discussion on Section C? Oh, hold on a second. What, what is? On B? Section B or C? Mr. Sasso? Which section? Is it Section B or C?
I have a second, B.
I'm sorry.
B.
B, okay. All right. Mr. Sasso?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Sasso, Precinct 2. I'm not sure the best way to handle this. I did spend time going through Section B, which is the administration... Excuse me, I'm sorry. Bear with me with my glasses here. Yes, Section 4, Administration. There are a number of items in here that I found that some are just simple typos, some are references that are pointing to the wrong place. I'm not, I mean, I'm certainly happy to go through them. There's probably six or eight of them. I don't know if you want to handle those as one amendment or what the best approach is for that.
Ms. Delios?
Yes, Jean Delios. I think we wanted to do the definition and then maybe move on from there. So, did you mention you wanted to do something with one of the definitions?
Yeah, I wanted to wait, for that, I thought we'd be better off waiting till Section 5, because that's where, if we add that section, if we add that definition first and then go back, you know, I think it'll be confusing. So, that's what I thought. But I think we've moved on to Section B, which is why I was talking about that, so...
Why don't we take them all? Do you think that, your opinion is they're all connected?
They're, no, they're not connected. They're just, they're, they're, some of them are questions, some of them are typos, some of them are things that aren't...
We'd better take them separately. I hate to say it, but we...
Okay. So, the first one is Section 449. I'm going to take my glasses off, because I can't see with them on. It says, "Special permits shall require a vote of at least four members of the SPGA." Does that require that it needs to be a majority vote? Does that have to be a unanimous vote? Is there specific for that?
Mr. Mieres?
State law requires four votes for a, so what's called, a so-called supermajority. So, that, that provision is, is required by state law.
Okay, so it's not, okay. All right, so it's a, so it's not, we don't have to define it unless we wanted to define it being unanimous then?
I don't think you could do it as unanimous. State law requires that it be four.
Okay. Okay. Section 4513. On the last part of that sentence says, "Section 4.3." It says, this is, and this is in the section regarding the zoning board of appeals and their powers. And then it says, "To hear and decide applications for special permits for those uses for which approval of the zoning board of appeals is required in accordance with the provisions of Section 4.3." 4.3 is CPDC. So, I think that needs to be 5.2.1, which is the area where it defines the different Go back up to 5.2.1 is where it identifies which, where ZBA is identified as a special permit authority.
Mr. Minat, do you think he's correct?
Sometimes it's hard to find stuff. I think that that's a, that is a typo, in the sense that it was probably not, not translated in part of the translation. And I think the correct reference should be to 5.2.1. So, I would encourage the maker of the motion to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Is there any exception, any problems? Okay, we will consider that as part of the main motion then. We don't need to take a vote. Continue, Mr. Sasso.
Okay. I think that should be, the second one should be Section 4.6.2.2. Again, just a typo.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
There are two references in that first sentence to 4.6.2.1. The second one should be 4.6.2.2.
Okay, the town council says that is correct. Is there any objection to making that as part of the initial motion? Not appearing? Mr. Sasso?
4.6.4.1, A, excuse me, Section C, within five days of the date stamp. It says, "The CPDC shall transmit one copy." I think the answer is it should be the town planner. Because it is the town planner that's actually date-stamping it at that point and has the application and...
Do you agree with that, Mr. Mieres? Okay. Again, if there's no objection, we'll make that as part of the main motion. Okay? Continue, Mr. Sasso.
Okay, the last item, at least that I think is, falls into this category, is 4.6.7. And I, I was just suggesting at the end of the first sentence, "The CPDC shall file a written decision with town clerk stating the application is approved and, as submitted, approved with conditions or denied." And I wanted to add the words, "in accordance with Section 4.6.4.1D."
Where is that exactly? Which section? 4.6.7?
She's typing it in right now. "In accordance with Section 4.6.4.1D." D is in dog.
Is there a second to that proposed amendment? Second? Mr. Sasso?
And the last, last item I had in this section is...
Excuse me, is that, is that, we're going to take a vote on that one unless, unless we feel that that should have been in there in the first place? Is that a typo or do you think that's a? That's acceptable? Okay. Okay, okay. So, is there any objection to making that part of the main motion? Not appearing, Mr. Sasso?
Just, the last question is actually on that Section 4.6.4.1D. This is a question which potentially could turn into a motion, but let me just ask it. So, the way the wording is written there is that the CPDC shall hold a hearing within 45 days of the date stamp, and then, within 45 days of the conclusion of that hearing, shall approve with conditions, deny, the site plan, or submit a written decision. Now, I know in the past, if I remember correctly, and forgive me, my memory's a little rusty, we had, the site plan review process had an overall 90-day process. And so, this actually, the way it's written, could result in a much smaller overall process. Now, maybe that's what we wanted, but I'm just curious if that was the intent, meaning that you could hold the hearing, let's say, within 20 days, and then you only have 45 days after that? I'm just curious if that was the intent. I know we've, again, we can always, within the context of the hearing process, postpone the review by agreement, but I just want to make sure that was, in fact, the intent.
Do we have a response? Mr. Mieres?
Jean assures me that that's the intent, but I would just like to point out one thing. The way this is set up, it's, the second 45-day period extends from after the hearing. So, when you've got something controversial and the hearing takes multiple days, you don't have an ultimate deadline between the beginning and the end. So, you don't need the, to work it out. It, the second 45-day period does not begin to run until after the hearing closes.
Until the public hearing is physically closed.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion in Section B? Yes, Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Megan Young, Precinct 4. Hopefully a friendly amendment to 4.2.2. Change the word, the two words punished by in the first sentence to subject to.
Is there a second? Second? Ms. Young?
Yes, this is for Ms. West particularly, who said that she'd really like violations to be business-friendly, and I think the word subject to versus punished is definitely speaking to that. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on that amendment? Not appearing. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. Further business under B? Mr. Tafoya?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members. Ben Tafoya, Precinct 4. On Section 4.5.2.1, which is variances, on page 20 of the document, it says, "No variance shall be issued pursuant to Section 4.4.1.2." So, is there something in particular in the bylaw that we were looking to reference at that point?
Mr. Mieres?
Just a typo, 4.5.1.2.
Okay, then, my next question...
Is there any objection to making that part of the main motion? Not appearing, Mr. Tafoya?
Yes, so then, as that section reads, there are 4.5.2.1, there are four subparts, unless the zoning board of appeals finds that A, B, C, D. And my reading of this, and I just wanted to make sure, is that the applicant has to meet all four criteria, A, B, C, and D. Yes?
The answer was yes.
Okay, and we're comfortable that it's written precisely that way? Yeah, and, and the C. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion in section B. Yes?
David Zeke, precinct one. This is just another typo. There is no 4.4, paragraph number.
Should it be special grant authority for...? Oh, they have it there, okay. Is there any objection, any objection to that being part of the main motion? Not appearing. Further discussion on the section B. All right, we will move on to section C. Where was a hand, I'm sorry? Excuse me?
Carolyn Whiting, precinct seven. And this is another thing that looks like a typo to me. In 4.5.2.1, paragraph A, in the second line, it says, "But do not affecting generally the zoning district," and I think it should probably say, "But do not generally affect the zoning district."
Mr. Mieres?
Yeah, we just imported the bad grammar of the state statute, but I, I agree with you, it should say generally affect instead of affect generally, even though the statute actually says it the other way around.
Is there any objection to that being part of the main motion? Not appearing. Any, oh, I'm sorry, town clerk has not found it yet. What page is that on? Page 20? Okay, we found it. Further discussion on section B. Yes? What was the question? What was? Okay, did you get that? Okay. Yes, for, this is under B, yes. Come on, Mr. Donnelly Moran?
Charles Stanley Moran, precinct seven. Section B, I'm looking in my book, and I'm not seeing it, so what cover, what sections are being discussed right now? I mean, I see transition, section two. I, I'm not understanding what is being discussed right now. Thank you.
But I see what he's saying, section B, okay, a new section 4.0, yeah, section B, which is section four, administration, yes. Further discussion on section B. Not appearing? We're taking the word generally unless there's any objection as part of the main motion? Okay. Section C. Leading sections 4.0 and so forth, discussion on the section C? Mr. Sasso?
John Sasso, precinct two. So, this is section five, correct? The new se, okay, thank you. So, I'd like to make an amendment. It will unfortunately bring us back to a definition in section two as well, but it made no sense to bring it up then, so I apologize, Mr. Moderator. So, there was obviously discussion earlier regarding the issue of the retail in business C. So, I'd like to make an amendment to try to address that, and there are two parts to this. The first part is, within the actual table, to change in retail store up to 35,000 square feet in business C from yes to no. The second part of this amendment, and this is something that has come out of CPDC, and I certainly feel that it should be further vetted and discussed, but is to add a accessory use for a new, a newly-defined accessory retail use for up to 35,000 feet with a note. The accessory use would be allowable in all districts with the exception of business C, which would require a special permit. And then, so there'd be a new note seven, which would say, in business C, up to three accessory retail uses may be allowed for the total combined area not to exceed 35,000 square feet. And then, there is a new definition in section two that would go along with accessory retail use.
Okay, Mr. Sasso, I will take the First Amendment, changing the no to yes, I'm sorry, I forgot that, right, right order?
Yes.
Yeah. The, the other piece seems to be out of scope. That seems to be adding something that was not proposed at this point, so I would recommend that you recommend it to a, for a further future town meeting, but I would accept your first point.
Okay, no, that's fine. I definitely want to keep the first motion in, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion on that proposed amendment. Sure. On the table, which is on page 27, retail stores up to 35,000 square feet, we are changing, you're proposing that we change yes to no. Right? You got that?
On business C.
Okay, good enough. Okay, further discussion on that proposed amendment. Not appearing. All, we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of the proposed amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, further business under section C? Yes, Mr. Donnelly Moran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Stanley Moran, precinct seven. Under the new section 5.6.4, I do have a question for somebody who currently has a chicken coop. When the regulations get changed, is there a grandfathering process, or, or do I then have to move the, the chicken coop, which by town regs isn't movable?
So, the nice thing about zoning is everything is grandfathered, so any change in the zoning does not apply. That's why you hear the term pre-existing non-conforming. That means that it complied with the zoning before. When you change the zoning, it does not require you to, to bring yourself into compliance with the new provisions. So, everything in zoning is subject to grandfathering.
What about beehives that there currently is no regulation, so...
Well, as I mentioned before, we've now protected your beehives, but, but the, to the extent that you're saying beehives are not subject to, were not subject to regulation before, but are subject to regulation now, they would not, that would only apply to new beehives.
Okay, all right. So, in section 5.6.4, I would like to change the 15 feet from any property line, or 50 feet from any property line to 15 feet. And I do wonder how livestock is defined, whether that is all agricultural animals, or whether that's just cattle, or, and sheep, or something. I don't think it was defined.
Okay, first, do we have a second to this proposed amendment? Yes, second. Okay, Mr. Donnelly Moran, you all set?
Yes, chickens and bees have many benefits, and if we required that they be placed 50 feet for properties under two acres, which, that covers most people, you know, it's going to have to be in somebody's house. And, just because, you know, most people don't have 50 feet from any of their property lines, and, you know, if you're aware of agriculture and trends, you know, there are lots of people, people in Somerville have chickens and beehives, you know. It's not a big imposition. Thank you.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment. Yes?
Nancy Toomey, precinct three. I wonder if it would be better, because I'm not sure that I would want pigs, or sheep, or livestock of other nature next to my house that close, if it could be done as an exception. So, you say, any structures used for garaging or screening for, et cetera, at least 50 feet from any property line, except for non-commercial residential, or I don't know exactly how to say this yet, chickens and bees, or just only make it chickens and bees, because those are probably a little bit more acceptable than pigs and sheep and other livestock. So, I don't know if Mr. Durand would like to think about that. Thanks.
Further discussion. Ms. Herrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Karen Herrick, precinct eight. Could we just clarify again? Are we talking about, this particular paragraph is talking about an Eric's, a commercial enterprise with lots of income versus, we heard $400,000, $400, and we heard, you know, just residential usage. Because I thought I heard our town council say that this is a, when we're talking agriculture, we're talking full-fledged business, and protecting it, which is fine, but I find this section to be a bit confusing, and I just wanted to clarify.
Do we have a clarification? Mr. Mieres?
Again, the definition of, of agricultural use is such that it either has to make a little bit of money, $500 a year is not a lot of money, but it still has to, has to be that, or, and be two acres, or it has to be five acres to qualify for the state protection. We have defined agriculture basically to include all of those various activities, regardless of the size, and we have said that in residential districts, those need special permits, and in the, in the other districts, they would be permitted by right. So, this is a, this is a, a discussion of agricultural uses. The term...
When you say size, size of what? Size of the money being generated? Size of, how come you're saying 500 is the state law, and it says 1,000 up there? Or we just going above and beyond? If we're just trying to, because I think we're trying to define commercial enterprises here.
I'm going to have to ask my associate.
There is, there's just a difference between having a business next door and having a bunny hutch next door, 15 feet away from the line. We didn't talk about rabbits. Mmm, rabbits.
Mr. Mieres?
Okay. That's right, I'm wrong. 1,000 is the right number. Okay?
Oh, okay.
I said 500, but it's really 1,000. That's why we write these things down, so we don't have to actually remember them.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment. Yes, Mr. Doxer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Doxer, precinct one. What are the, the current setbacks for agricultural uses that we have in place right now? Are they, in fact, 50 feet? They are currently 50 feet. Okay, so what's in the amendment now is to change it down to 15. So, I think, I, like Ms. Toomey before, would have a concern with that, would rather see an exception added to this, as opposed to changing it completely to 50, to 15 feet. Should we entertain an amendment to it, I guess?
You could do that. It might be confusing. One way to do it would be to vote this up or down, and then if it, if it passes, we go ahead with it. Otherwise, I'll call on you.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on this proposed amendment. Mr. Donnelly Moran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Stanley Moran, precinct seven. So, I've heard that, okay, this doesn't apply, it's only agricultural uses of two acres or five acres, but it says, "Special permit for certain agricultural uses. No," I emphasize no, "agricultural use shall be permitted on a parcel of land less than two acres, dot, dot, dot." It's not saying "except for," you know, the, in a residential area, you know, so I think this is an issue that, you know, I know the state has the rules about, you know, two acres and five acres and all of that, but, you know, that, for most of us, that doesn't apply.
Further discussion? Are you all set down front? Okay, we will proceed to a, oh, Mr. DeDario.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ron DeDario, precinct six. On that same, on that same article 5.6.4, I'm just wondering where it says that "No agricultural use shall be permitted on a parcel of land less than two acres," and it continues, "If the sale of products produced thereon generates less than $1,000 per acre," and I find that, maybe it's me, but should that say more than $1,000? And that's just a question. It seems if it produces less than 1,000, say it produced, you know, $25 per acre or something, no agricultural use would be... no agricultural use would be permitted? I'm just confused by it. Thank you.
Ms. Toomey-Aries?
Well, not everything is as logical as you might think it should be. But the only thing that's protected is commercial agriculture. And so the $1,000 is, is the cutoff. And it actually does, it does mean that we have to permit by right anything that is two acres and $1,000 or five acres. That's what we have to permit by right. If it's less than 1,000 and less than two acres, then the town is free to, is free to regulate it. Now, you actually caused me, there actually is a contradiction, which we probably need to fix. Because that sentence says that it requires a special permit anywhere. And the use table says it requires a special permit only in the residential districts and not in the commercial districts. So depending on which one you want, we either need to fix the sentence or we need to fix the table. So...
While you're thinking of that, further discussion on the 50 versus 15 feet? Not appearing. We will take a vote on amending the word 50 feet to 15 feet. And the livestock shall be located at least 50 feet from the, any property line. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed? And the motion does not carry. Mr. Doxer, did you have a proposed amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Doxer, precinct one. What I'd like to suggest is an amendment in here that would, in 5.6.4B, I'm not sure of the exact wording yet, but to allow for a special permit to be granted in certain other circumstances and requiring a smaller setback. I'm not quite sure how to propose that. Maybe it's more in 5.6.4, allowing for a special permit... No, I think it's in B. What I'm trying to do is figure out a way to help Mr. Donnelly Moran here. Maybe suggesting that a special permit could be granted by CPDC for certain livestock only, with a setback to be 15 feet.
I'm afraid we need exactly wording to vote on.
Or in the case of bees and chickens, at least 15 feet from any property line.
Okay, can we have that keyed in?
Rabbits. Rabbits was suggested as a friendly amendment.
Can we get that keyed in? Paid it? Were you all sat down there? Is that the amendment you, you proposed?
Actually, there was a friendly amendment requested to add rabbits into the list.
Is there a second to that proposed amendment? Second. Further discussion on the amendment? Mr. O'Neill?
John O'Neill, precinct four. I don't know if anybody else is feeling frustration on this particular one, because we're talking about, once again, simplifying. And so now something that doesn't require a special permit, you're going to, you're adding a process. Can't we, you know, there has to be some way that we can not add on and still allow a use that now doesn't require a permit to continue not having, allow a permit? Or at least, at least, Board of Health, maybe, but a special permit? It just doesn't seem to accomplish what Mr. Donnelly Moran is just asking us to be able to continue to do. And other people, I know that he's not the only one in town. So I think we should find some way to accommodate without, I don't think this language goes, goes to his, the sense of what he's trying to accomplish.
Further discussion? Yes. Mr. Westerman?
Joe Westerman, precinct three. I believe the word "located" should be in front of, should be "special permit." If it's located at least 15 feet from the property line. It looks like something's missing there. We don't talk about where they're located. It's in the sentence above. Yeah.
Are you adding the word "located" before "at"?
Well, shouldn't it be "special permit" but above where the livestock is located 50 feet from the property line? We, we talk about 15 feet, but not located. So we don't say where it is.
So here's what you do. Okay, but you don't need that "must be." So... So... Housing pens, housing comma, you need a comma there. Pens or enclosures for poultry, rabbits, or bees. Strike "must be" and put "located." At least 15 feet from any property line may be authorized by special permit.
Thank you.
Does that work?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to the mover? Any objection? Not appearing. Continue, any further discussion on this particular amendment? Yes.
Ann Landry, precinct five. Just looking for another alternative to remove the requirement for a special permit for these kinds of uses. What if we put the exception after "no agricultural use"? So no agricultural use except for the raising of poultry, rabbits, or bees, comma? Would that run in, would that run into any issue with state law? I understand it wouldn't, it wouldn't then provide for the 15 feet requirement.
As I mentioned before, we, if you, if you're going to require special permit in the residential district and not require it in the business district, we do have to rewrite this sentence to make that clear. If you're going to require a special permit everywhere, then you need to change the use table to reflect that. We still have to worry about that problem. But what you're suggesting is that some agricultural uses that are not subject to state protection would be permissible by right and some by special permit?
Yes.
You could do that if you, if you choose.
That was just in response to someone's previous suggestion that we remove the special permitting requirement for these particular uses.
We will take a vote on this. If you, if you would like to try to make another, propose another amendment after this, I will look for your hand. Further discussion on this? Yes.
Cynthia Cool, precinct six. It says, part B, it says, "Any structure used for garaging or screening of tools, fire machining, or vehicles or for providing housing pens or enclosures for livestock." Now, how do we get bees from livestock? Or rabbits or poultry? I consider that, you know, cows, horses, pigs, something like that. I mean, it, it already says at the top, it says "special permit" without a "special permit." But I don't think 50 feet even applies to this.
Any comment? No further discussion? Oh, do you have a comment? Ms. Toomey-Aries?
Well, left to my own devices, I would have, I would agree with you and say that livestock means, does not mean things like bees. Where this is now, it provides one standard for, clearly provides one standard for chickens or poultry, I'm sorry, rabbits and bees, and a different standard for everything else. It's perfectly fine. But if that's what this group wants, then, then that's what they've got. If you want something different, you can propose something different.
Ms. West?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this in terms of the special permit component as well. I'm wondering if it's possible to get rid of all the extra stuff and put "large animal" in front of livestock, which is essentially what we're talking about. People don't want pigs and horses and cows, right? I don't know if that's, if that works. And if that doesn't work, then the other option might be to, say, accept that housing pens, enclosures for poultry, rabbits, or bees must, must be located at least 15 feet from the property line and leave off the rest of the special permit? Because we don't necessarily need a special permit if we don't have it today. Does that second one work better, Ray, than the first one?
Well, if you're going to leave, if you're going to leave the reference to poultry, rabbits, or bees, then I don't think you, that, that you want to put the word "large" because...
No, I don't want both.
You know, because you don't want both, because you'll end up with something, some kind of animal that's halfway in between. So... But you don't have to make it by special permit. You could do it, just say, "Provided however, the housing pens or enclosures for poultry, rabbits, or bees may be located..." In this case, I would change it to, "Not less than 15 feet from any property line, period."
So, so that will be my, my proposal to amendment then?
Okay, I'll be watching for you. Further discussion on the amendment, the proposed amendment we had before us? Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Tuttle, precinct three. As a homeowner with a 25,000-square-foot lot in S-20, I want to, to talk against the amendment because I believe that the agricultural use in a residential district is improper as a zoning decision. You know, I, I don't really want my next-door neighbor to have pigs or ferrets or, you know, breeding dogs for sale 15 feet from my property. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Proposed amendment? Not appearing? Oh. And I'll take you out of that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Greg Salvatelli, precinct six. With a special permit, would there be a notification to the neighbors so they could come and give their input as to whether they would have issues with the 15 feet or 50 feet setback for poultry?
Ms. Toomey-Aries?
So all special permit processes require a hearing and require notice. Actually, the bylaw goes a little bit beyond state law because state law requires notice to a butters and to a butters to a butters within 300 feet. But our bylaw requires notice to everyone within 300 feet, whether they're a butters to a butters or not.
Thank you. And if, if this one failed in the other conversation about putting it up top about 15 feet back for all poultry, would that not mean that a large, commercial agriculture group could come in and have a 15, have poultry then 15 feet from your, from your lot? If you put that into a general statement, doesn't it actually sort of, you know, make it worse for? You know, you might be trying to help the residential use for a low, you know, for, for a low use, but you might actually make it worse for those large companies that may come in?
Ms. Toomey-Aries?
Well, without commenting on the, on the policy implications of what you're saying, where we stand right now under the, under the use table is that in commercial districts, these uses are permitted. And in residential districts, they're permitted only by special, by special permit. So what that would mean, I guess, in a, if somebody, if somebody was in a residential district and was proposing the sort of thing that you're talking about, you'd have to come in and get a special permit. And I imagine that, that the CPDC would be concerned about the impacts on the neighbors. Okay.
Ms. Herrick?
Steve Herrick, precinct eight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I can see the headlines now. Town meeting spends the entire evening talking about the birds and the bees. I just, I just want to make sure I understand this fully. Because I'm still stuck on Mr. DeDario's question. It says up there, unless it produces less than $1,000 per acre. Does that mean you need a special permit if it's little, but you don't if it's big? So if you have a four-acre lot and you're generating $20,000 an acre, because it's a booming operation, no permit needed? Am I, I just want to make sure I understand this. And, and this is driven by the state? So we don't have any choice in how we phrase that? Is this not up to us, or? Okay.
Further discussion? Ms. O'Neill?
Mary Ellen O'Neill, precinct four. Can we just, I'm against this because I think we should make an exception for these animals. I mean, it seems silly. If you want to have a bunny hutch out in your yard, you're going to need a special permit. So can we just quickly review? What is the current policy with regard to these animals? Bees, I assume there's nothing? People can just have bees if they want? Is there any Board of Health regulation on those?
Do we have a response? Ms. Delios?
Jean Delios, there are Board of Health regulations on the keeping of animals, Section 2.
Are bees defined, are, do, I think there are many people in town that have beehives. Do they...
Okay, so... This is a relatively long document that is governed by the Board of Health, so I'm not terribly familiar with it, but it does talk about protecting the public health and reading and as it relates to the keeping of animals, and there are, these are the regulations to protect health and safety of the public. It goes on to say it's, the authority lies within Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 31 and 155. Regulations are not intended to unreasonably regulate the use of land for commercial agriculture. Commercial agriculture may be limited by town bylaw to activities on parcels of five acres or more or on parcels of two acres or more if the sale, again, produced from the agricultural use and the parcel generates at least $1,000. That goes back to that same standard. So as far as what types of animals it regulates...
That's all commercial, so we don't, right now, we just, we don't really have, there's no special permit required for any of these, these three little subsets. And I don't understand livestock, but we didn't define that in definition, so we're not protected by that. So I just, I don't want to bother you with all that time. I just think that we should vote this down and then make an exception for those few groups of creatures.
Who's speaking? Could you use the microphone?
Peter Lydecker, Precinct 1. Could you just clarify what you read? I think you said it's at least 1,000 as opposed to less than 1,000?
I said that it's on parcels annually generate at least 1,000 per acre based on gross sales.
At least as opposed to less than, which is what this says.
Yeah, this says, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3. I don't know if that's, that's what it's saying.
Mr. Mieres?
That's because, that's because this thing says, "We are not regulating anything that is more than $1,000." And this one says, "We're only regulating things that are less than $1,000."
Further discussion on the proposed amendment? Yes.
Gary Phillips, Precinct 7. I do urge approval of this amendment. We've had chickens, and though it's not spelled out, I believe it's a common knowledge that roosters are not allowed in a residential area, and we've just, all we can say is that as far as poultry goes, it's probably one of the least expensive forms of livestock you could have in a neighborhood, and with the interests of the neighbors are concerned, whereas there is notification in any approval process, I think that their, their needs and rights are sufficiently protected. But I strongly urge that you approve of this. There's something great about raising chickens and having organic eggs for breakfast. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, we will take a vote on the proposed amendment, which adds, is that it there? Adding the words, "Provided however, the housing pens or enclosures for poultry, rabbits or bees, at least 15 feet away from any property line may be authorized by special permit." All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed, and the motion does not carry. Ms. West? Did I hear? Need to get to the microphone. We have a motion to adjourn. This is, is there a second? Second. This is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, and the motion carries. This town meeting stands adjourned.